Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024. I didn't read that correctly. This is a meeting of City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of December 10, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Your President.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash is absent. Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holden?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Mayor Heicklen?
I am here.
Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item is approval of minutes and its consideration of approval of the City Council Finance Minutes of November 21, 2024. I need a motion to approve or reject the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, gratitude to the absentee Shawnee tribe for their assistance in obtaining grant funding to complete a number of important projects on tribal routes within the city of Norman. I need to reject the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, expressing gratitude to the absentee Shawnee tribe for assistance in obtaining grant funding to complete a number of important projects on tribal routes within the city of Norman. Whereas federal tribal transportation funds can be spent on improving tribal travel routes and federal tribal transportation funds can be spent improving tribal routes that are also located within the city of Norman. Whereas a relationship needed to be formed between the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman to be able to use federal tribal transportation funds to fund improvements to the city of Norman streets and roadways. And whereas the absentee Shawnee tribe reached out to the city of Norman in the fall of 2022 regarding the use of federal tribal transportation funds on safety projects to be submitted for 2023 grant funding. And whereas the 2023 grant award totaling nearly $74,000 funded our four intersection conversions to always stop control on 72nd Avenue Southeast, on 168th Avenue Northeast, as well as a state-of-the-art curb warning system at 156th Avenue Northeast. And whereas the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman collaborated on another successful 2024 safety grant application totaling nearly $4,000 converting more than four more intersections to always stop control on Robinson Street, Lindsey Street, and 108th Avenue Southeast. And whereas the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman collaborated on a successful 2024 bridge grant application that will award $13.7 million to replace the existing bridge on Porter Avenue over the Little River extending the number of bridges that the 2023 Bridge Bond Program can address. And whereas the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman collaborated on a roadway construction grant for 24th Avenue Northeast yet to be awarded from Rock Creek Road to Tecumseh Road, which is a 2019 transportation bond project that has had difficulty qualifying for traditional federal funds. And whereas absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman will collaborate on a 2025 grant application to convert four more intersections to always stop control on Franklin Road, Robinson Street, 60th Avenue Southeast, 156th Avenue Northeast, as well as the construction of a roundabout on Porter Avenue where it intersects Franklin Road and Broadway. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the relationship has that is formed between the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman has been beneficial to both parties as tribal routes are being improved and funding injected in the city of Norman's various bond programs has allowed for the funding of those programs to be spread to other equally important projects. And the spirit of cooperation between the absentee Shawnee tribe and the city of Norman has been a model that could be adopted for other tribal entities and other governments. I'd like to recognize Mr. Anthony Johnson to come up and get the award, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just look forward to the cooperation, working with the tribe and the city government. This is just a start of some projects that we can all work together, helping out with transportation. Safety is the main thing. Most of you know I come from a law enforcement background, so working a lot of wrecks out in that area, helping with traffic control as well, especially 156th and Highway 9 around the curve, we've had many accidents there. I just appreciate the cooperation with the city of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the month of December 2024 is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers?
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of December 2024 as impaired driving prevention month in the city of Norman. Whereas every year, thousands of lives are needlessly lost on our nation's roadways as a result of alcohol and drug impaired driving. And whereas alcohol, illicit drugs, prescription medication, and over-the-counter medications can impair a driver's judgment, decrease motor coordination, and slow the reaction time necessary to safely operate a motor vehicle. And whereas the Federal Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act calls for the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to issue a new standard for the advanced drunk and impaired prevention technology for new vehicles, which would help prevent impaired drivers from taking the wheel. And whereas while technology continues to advance, everyone must take individual responsibility and pledge never to drive while impaired and to deter others from making that fateful decision. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of December 2024 is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the city of Norman and urge residents of the city of Norman to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to help end impaired driving. I'd like to recognize Captain Carl Pendleton, please.
Mayor, Council, citizens of Norman, I'd like to express our sincere gratitude for the recognition of December as Impaired Driving Awareness Month. The proclamation signifies a vital commitment to the safety and well-being of the community, the importance of education and prevention, and the fight against impaired driving. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the Norman Police Department and University of Oklahoma's Collision Investigation Reconstruction Team, also known as CERT. This team is the group that investigates serious and fatal collisions within the city of Norman. These events are some of the most challenging and difficult and unimaginable events that take place within our city. This group of dedicated individuals investigates these incidents after taking at least a minimum of 80 hours, many far more than 80 hours of additional training in addition to their law enforcement training. They spend days, hours, weeks upon these investigations. Of the 83 investigations our team handled in the last three years, 21% of those involved impaired driving. These collisions were preventable. Although addiction is not a choice, impaired driving always is. To the 19 members, including supervisors of this team who dedicate so much to themselves and to the citizens and the families of Norman, thank you. Thank you for meticulously measuring scenes, completing intense diagrams, measuring and using that math that all of us knew we would never use as adults. Thank you for taking time away from your families to stand beside those families and the loved ones who lost someone that they truly cared about. Thank you for your compassion. Thank you for your commitment. And thank you to the citizens of Norman for taking impaired driving very seriously. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements. I'll start with Ward 1.
Okay. This will be our last full meeting for the holidays, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everybody. To go along with the Impaired Driving Awareness Month and Prevention Month, there will be DUI checkpoints on December 20th. So you heard it here first. You shouldn't be drinking and driving, period. We have some amazing transportation options here in Norman. We have our bus system. We have our embark program. It's $2. They'll pick you up anywhere. They'll take you almost anywhere. There is absolutely zero reason to be getting a DUI in this city. There's Uber. There's, you know, call me if it comes down to it. Don't drink and drive. To go along with that, there's also a lot of mental health issues that go along, you know, around the holidays. People away from families. When I was in the service, you have people overseas. But, you know, be very aware of that. Suicide's, mental health is a very, very real issue. It's worse today than it's ever been. So when I was in the military, they gave you that ACE card. You ask, you care, and you escort. So if you see somebody that you think is having a rough time, you know, ask them if they're okay. Let them know that you care about them and then get them to help. And make sure you stay with them until they get to help. And then the last thing, since it is the holidays, I just wanted to bring your attention to our consent docket and all the things that we actually work together and come together on to make this city better. You don't hear about it because, well, we don't have, you know, we don't have public comment on it and stuff, but it's three of the big things on here. Sooner Theater, there's $88,000 for renovations of Sooner Theater, which is an amazing thing. Crimson Flats, which is our newest affordable housing development. It'll be going in soon. All that paperwork's in. Can't wait for that. What we need here is more affordable housing. Absolutely. And then the last thing? I'm not sure. I can't find it. I lost here. But anyway, amazing things going on. So Firehouse Art Center's got some amazing Christmas programs, art classes going on. The city has amazing things. We just had Winter Fest, which was our first winter festival. It went amazing. The Christmas parade was great. And so just be safe, take care of each other, and have a happy holidays.
Councilmember?
Yeah, no announcements other than to wish everybody a safe and joyful holiday and New Year. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Good evening, Ward 3 in Norman, Oklahoma. I really don't have any announcements other than to say whatever holiday it is you celebrate, have a great one, and enjoy your time with your family and friends.
Councilmember?
Yes. Happy holidays, Ward 4 and City of Norman. Since we will not be meeting on Tuesday, December 24th, here are some choice events and resources happening or resources that you can get connected to in Ward 4. We just talked about in our council conference, Aim Norman. That event is happening at YFAC right now, but tomorrow at the Development Center next door to this building, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we'll have an open house and the community is encouraged to come out and learn about our various land use, stormwater, water, wastewater, transportation, housing, and parks plans. This will be the last opportunity to in-person provide feedback, but as we learned earlier, there will be other opportunities on the website. And when you see these maps floating around, there'll be a QR code, and you can submit your comments there. Next, on Friday, December 13th, we have several art-related events. First up this Friday at Firehouse Art Center, we have a ribbon cutting slash grand opening of the Kirkpatrick patio, sorry, Kirkpatrick pottery patio at 10:00 AM. As many know, the Firehouse Art Center restarted their pottery program in 2023 and now has a thriving pottery studio. Now in 2024, with support from public and private donors, they have developed their old kiln yard into an active and engaging space for our Norman community. Then on Friday afternoon at 2:00 PM, we have a public art dedication at the Adult Wellness Education Center, followed by a kinetic flower workshop at 3:00 PM. The sculpture debuting is a dichroic glass flower and butterfly created by Skunk Control of Australia. There will also be a second community art activity the following day, Saturday, December 14th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the All. Attendees will create a fluttering monarch butterfly with optical filters used on the public art piece. Participants will be introduced to nano fabricated materials and presented with a hands-on means of learning how color can be created as in nature via structure. Friday evening, everybody might be familiar with, but 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we have our second Friday Art Walk in downtown Norman. There are a lot of great shows planned at the galleries and storefronts, and this is a perfect opportunity to support local while you find those unique gifts for your colleagues, friends, and family. 'Tis the season. So if you want to donate, volunteer, or are interested in the Norman Christmas Day Community Dinner on December 25th, visit normancrismasdinner.org to connect with organizers. As per their website, 2024 marks the 38th anniversary of the Norman Christmas Day Community Dinner. The free dinner is open to everyone. It serves our community with a loving holiday meal and brings together families of all ages, many of whom are renewed in spirit by their relationship with others through acceptance and togetherness. The dinner is held at the Norman High School Commons Cafeteria, 911 West Main Street. On Christmas Day from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Santa is there to help distribute toys and gifts to the kids and adults. Meals will be delivered to local residents who are maybe not able to get out. Please contact Bob McG, I hope I don't mess up his name, McGarian? Yeah. 405-364-3273 by December 21st to make arrangements for delivery. Last, because it's the holiday season and it can be difficult for people who maybe don't have resources. Are you or someone in your orbit, a struggling mom-to-be and/or a single parent? If so, Center for Children and Families located at 210 South Cockrell have two dates you should make note of. Thursday, December 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, there is a Parent Cafe, CCFI Events, which you could look at on Facebook. States this month's theme is parenting can be crafty. We provide dinner, childcare, and a setting to express the frustrations that can come with parenting. Being a parent is never easy, but doing it alone is even harder, and dinner will be served at 5:30. Then on December 20th, CCFI is scheduled to host the Infant Crisis Services Baby Mobile from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The event info states no appointment is needed and services are offered on a drive-through basis whilst supplies last. Here are a few reminders. The eligible ages for this event are birth through three years. The legal guardian must be present. Child does not need to be present. Receive one week's worth of diapers, food, and formula. They also want guests to know they can access the CCFI baby pantry if they miss out on this event. CCFI's baby pantry supplies are offered free of charge, no questions asked. CCFI is regularly open weekdays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. All said, I hope whether you celebrate Kwanzaa, Christmas, or Hanukkah, or any other holidays, it's a safe and joyous holiday season for you all. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Just encourage everyone to have a safe and happy holiday with friends and family. Be careful as you go to Christmas parties and visit with coworkers and things like that and take heed in the proclamation of Norman being against impaired driving. Whenever you make that choice to drive impaired, you're not only risking your own safety, but everyone around you. So have a safe and happy holiday season.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Would just echo those same thoughts about impaired driving, and there's a lot of fatality crashes in Norman that can be prevented, not only by not driving impaired, but also by street design and different things like that, where we're looking at how can we make our streets safer for people in, just in general? Because, you know, exponentially more people in Norman are killed every year in car crashes than homicide or violent crime. So, and many of them, as the police noted, are preventable deaths. And so definitely want to echo that. And as was mentioned about the public art dedication on Friday at the Wellness Center, would encourage people to attend that. And just to remind folks again, if you're wondering about why we're doing these art projects, they are part of the voter-approved Norman Forward Program that requires 1% of each project cost has to go towards a public art piece at that location. And so certainly, everybody has different opinions about what good art is or isn't, or that maybe we could spend money better on other things, but these projects were voter-approved for this very specific purpose. And regardless of what you think about art or not, these pieces are unique to Norman. There is no other piece like it in any other city or town anywhere else. So it's our piece of art, whether we think it looks good or not. So also, the Art Walk, as was mentioned, would encourage everybody to go check that out. It's one of the best times of the month. And there's some new businesses downtown on Main Street like Rosa Mezcal Restaurant that just opened last week. And I've heard so far, it's really good. I haven't been able to try it, but I would encourage people to try them out and all the other wonderful restaurants and places downtown during Art Walk. And then also echo the AIM Open House going on at the YFAC right now, the Young Family Center. And then also tomorrow, 11:00 to 5:00 PM, here at City Hall in the Development Center. And then, as was mentioned too by Councilmember Ball, you know, the council, like the consent docket, there's a whole lot of things that we agree on. There's a lot more nine-zero votes up here than there are five-to-four votes. It's the five-to-four votes that get the attention usually because that means it was probably a pretty contentious issue. There was probably a lot of public feedback for and against, and that's what kind of gets the headlines. But I think it is important to note that the nine of us, even though we're all elected by it from different parts of the city, we do work together a lot and on a lot of different things. And we do vote unanimously on a lot of them much more often than we are divided about them. So I appreciate that being pointed out because it is, it kind of does get lost in what goes on here. So, and then other than that, just wanted to also express, since we won't be meeting again, I hope everyone has a wonderful holidays and gets to see family and spend time with the people you care about and get ready for another year and many big things ahead, I think, in Norman over the next year and five years and 10 years. So anyway, think about, again, the things we have, be thankful for them, and try to be understanding of what other people may be going through during this time of year and all year for that matter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays going forward, and that's it for Ward 8.
I'd just like to say thank you to the people that participated in the parade and thank you to the Parks Department and Recreation Department for their Christmas celebration and combining those celebrations together. It didn't matter if you drove in the parade or watched the parade, it was well attended. There are more people there than I've seen at most events that we have. And if you missed the drone show, you missed it because that was absolutely wonderful. Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah as it comes in, all the things that are, whoever you serve in this, in this time. May this time be a time of peace for y'all, and I wish you the best in next year. Next item on the agenda is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine, boy, I'll learn to read one day, those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 3 through Item 25 be placed on the Consent Docket. So I need a motion to place Items 3 through 25 on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place Items 3 through 25 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been to place Items 3 through 25 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. May cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. And to your point, councilmember, you're right. We do a lot of things unanimously. Nonconsent items, item number 26, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan located on the southeast corner of Highway 9 and Jenkins Avenue and place the same in mixed-use designation and change approximately 11.5 acres from future urban service area to current urban service area. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative from the applicant? There he is.
And councilmembers, glad to be here tonight. Let's start in Ward 7 tonight. So I'm Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. This is an item at the southeast corner of Highway 9 and Jenkins and just south of the National Weather Center. So let's take you through this fairly quickly. So Highway 9, we see the context here. You see the Avaro plant to the east of us, and the site is that yellow outline right there, the National Weather Center just north of it. Highway 9 carrying across the north side of the site. To the left are all your facilities, the city facilities, the pet animal shelter, the wastewater plant, the transfer station. All of those facilities are just All of those facilities are just west of us, and to the south is basically floodplains and some rural uses. So we'll zoom in a little bit closer here. This is actually GIS. I always like to show you GIS just to show you what is within our confines here per your mapping. What you can see on here is there are large sewer lines, which are the green lines, but there is no floodplain or WQbz zone. It's about a fifty-six acre site, and there was some confusion early on in this matter if there was floodplain on our site. There is not. The floodplain you could see off to the right, and so nothing within our site is actual floodplain. Here is what's proposed and was existing. On the left is the existing zoning and twenty twenty, or the existing 2025. And you see there the shaded diagram means that it was basically future urban service area, the lower-left side of it where it says IND there. It's about eleven acre part of it. We certainly believe it's ready to put into the current urban service area, partly because directly across the street is the wastewater treatment plant, and all the facilities are spanning right through this site. So we certainly think we're at a good point here to bring that into the urban service area. The existing zoning is all industrial, I-1, which is important as we think about this project because under I-1 industrial, this site could be completely covered with large industrial uses and no impervious limits of any kind, no commercial lighting limits. Everything could go into the site in a pretty intense manner. This is changing that and really drawing it back into a mixture of uses that I'll show you in just a moment. So it's changing from I-1 light industrial to a PUD, and on the left, the 2025 plan would change from industrial to mixed use. This is the preliminary plat. I always like to show you this because this is a legal document that you're being asked to adopt. It shows you basically a number of lots and then some detention areas and some open spaces and the different residential accounts. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat. Now, let me go back one slide. So we've divided this up into four development areas, and the PUD describes it as uses in four development areas. Across the top, which is Highway Nine, is commercial, hospitality, and mixed use. And those are basically all the basket of commercial uses that you would typically think about. Gas station is what's most likely proposed on the corner, restaurants, hotel, and some availability in mixed use as well. That would be all across the Highway Nine corridor. On the lower left, you see in light blue, is office warehouse and light industrial. This is basically still I-1, although we did take out funeral home and crematorium from the allowable uses. So those are no longer allowed in this use under I-1. They would be allowed as a matter of right, subject to some limitations. Then in the middle is Developmentary Four of multifamily townhomes, and then at the bottom is Developmentary Three, which is basically duplexes. This is the site plan, again, just a legal document that you'll be asked to approve. And then detention, and the full engineering team is here tonight to talk to you about this project if you need to discuss it. I think it's interesting on this slide, and we didn't put the actual numbers on here, but the capacity of these detention ponds is planned at over a million cubic feet. That's a unit of measurement that they use. Required would only be about seven hundred and forty thousand cubic feet. So we are somewhere ballparkish, fifty percent more detention than what would be required on this site. Significant detention allowances. This is just a more color diagram of what it looks like. I'll move on to kind of that in a little bit more context. There are about one hundred and fifty-five housing units planned on this site. Every time we can grab housing, we like to because we've shown you this slide many times, and if you're tired of me showing you this slide, please just tell me to stop showing it to you. But I like to keep showing it to you to remind us all of how much housing we need in our community. And the reality of it is that your AIM Committee has determined we need on ballpark about eleven hundred new housing units every year. That's a lot. If you see the bottom of that screen, we typically only sort of ballpark maybe six, seven hundred a year. You see eleven hundred and six is that red line. Over the past twenty-four years, we've only done that about four times. So we need a lot more housing than we're producing, and we continue to try to bring you that where we can. This is just some imagery, some really early-on imagery that Mr. Farzani put together for us to kind of see. Highway Nine on the left, and behind us is the city uses. And what is really important here to note is that they've designed a way that the industrial and the commercial really shield the residential on the backside from those heavy city uses. And you see sort of a street view. They intend this to be a very walkable corner, a very walkable community. A little bit more here. This is looking down the street to what is likely a hotel use, and they really think a hotel use could do really well here with the National Research Center right across the street. They also think that all these resident, all the commercial uses will do very well because we've certainly heard over the years that a lot of people leave the National Weather Center to go to downtown to eat or to take different areas of town. There's nothing really close to this for them to enjoy. This will help that. So in summary, it's a downzone intensity, I-1 to mixed use, much greener than I-1, uses industrial uses to buffer the city uses to the west, more housing, and planning commission unanimously approve this item. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have, me or the engineering team, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Questions from council? Yes, sir.
Hey, hey. So I did want to touch more on the existing zoning. And for a very long time, this property was part of the Avara, Shackley, Estellas, however far you want to go back, whatever name that plant has been. It was part of that property originally, is that right? And then they sold it off just a few years ago. So some folks may wonder why hasn't it been developed already industrially? And I would assume because it was owned by Avara that they already have a massive plant right there, and they didn't need to, and that's why they sold it off. But I did want you to touch on the allowable uses under the current zoning. You mentioned a couple of them, but would you mind maybe highlighting some of the kind of real intense uses that could be done by right without council approval on this property right now?
I'd be happy, Councilmember. And you asked me that earlier today, and we pulled the list for you. I'll just kind of read them off for you. And this would be allowable on the entirety of the site right now as a matter of right. And it would be automobile sales and services, building material sales yards, contractor equipment storage, basically a contracting yard, crematorium, funeral parlor, farm machinery, mobile home and camper sales, office buildings, which is always allowed in I-1, public utility service yards, truck and farm implement sales, truck terminal, veterinary hospital warehousing, trade schools, and impoundment yards. So you could basically put that in as an entire yard of impoundment of vehicles, fence it off, gravel it, pave it. All of that would be allowable as a matter of right. And then there are some other special uses that really get even more intense from that if you do it in a certain fashion. So in manufacturing, compounds, manufacturing of liquor, all of these would happen inside a building, manufacturing, a lot of different manufacturing uses, machine shops, punch shops. And some of these, we always get, always intrigued, these were written back in the nineteen fifty's. So it even says poultry or rabbit killing incidental to retail business on the same premises. So apparently that's how they used to do it back in the day, not sure. But all of that, if somebody wanted to try that again today, would be allowed on that site. That would be a special use, some of those, but many of those would be matter of right.
It could be a very intensive factory that produces loud noise, could produce chemicals in the air, light pollution, as you mentioned, a pretty wide range of things that people living nearby may not want to have.
That's correct, Councilmember. Yeah, very intense uses. I-1, we have very few. I-2 is another industrial category in our city. Very few of those, those are really intense industrial uses. I-1 is the predominant industrial use, but can accommodate many different, what we would call nuisance uses, but as a matter of right, yeah.
And as you mentioned, this rezoning is a much less intensive use than what the current zoning would allow.
That's correct.
And this rezoning does have open space requirements and things like that. How much of this development is open green space?
I should have had that number up there for you. We can show you roughly the green area. You can kind of see it here. I don't remember the percent. Let's see if we had it on here. Do you remember it by chance? Twenty. Okay, we had about twenty percent open space.
And you mentioned that under industrial, it could be pretty much a hundred percent of coverage.
Pretty much, yeah.
The stormwater part of it, you mentioned, got some folks here that might be able to talk about that. Would you kind of go over how this development will manage stormwater runoff? You know, there are issues with Bishop Creek currently downstream and upstream for that matter, but how will this development manage that stormwater runoff as far as, like you mentioned, keeping, retaining some of it on site, how that will be released so it's not all at once, and things like that?
Happy to, and I'm going to ask Anthony to come up in just a moment. First, I want to preface it with a couple of comments. You recall, certainly over recent years, we had discussions about stormwater in this area in Norman. There was a time when city staff would recommend that we do fee in lieu of detention because we're at the bottom of the basin, and you might remember some of those discussions. We didn't even approach that this way this time. We said, let's just flat out do detention. And as I mentioned earlier, we're doing far more than what would be required under normal detention. But Anthony, if you'd come up and get a better explanation from the engineer.
Sure. So good evening, council. I'm Anthony Hamlet, Crapetos Associates, here to represent again, as well as Mr. Rieger. With this preliminary plat application, we submitted a preliminary drainage report. It was reviewed by staff. It was approved. However, at the time of the final plat application in the future, we'll have a more detail-oriented drainage report for, that will meet the drainage ordinance and the drainage criteria. So with that being said, we'll analyze different basins within the tract, and then we'll release less than historic runoff per the drainage ordinance.
Okay. And are there any things like bioswells or parking lot stuff like that where it's...
Right. So at this juncture, it's preliminary. At the time of the final plat application, we'll take those into consideration because we know it's within the drainage criteria. So we can look at bioswells, four bays, back bays, stuff like that. So it'll be, we can look at that final plat application.
Okay. And none of this project is on, or you're not going to be working in Bishop Creek? You're not going to be disturbing Bishop Creek?
No, not at all.
As it currently sits?
Right.
There's a lot of vegetation and trees that are on both sides.
Which would help with sediment.
Right. And but this project, you're not going to be disturbing?
No.
Getting into that. It's not even on the property, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's the stormwater question I had. And then for Sean, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We talked about the, not only the trees along Bishop Creek there, but the trees along Highway Nine. I know some of them on the corner specifically for the service station would probably be removed, but the line of trees that goes along Highway Nine right there kind of acts as a real nice natural buffer. From what I understand, most of all those trees would be remaining.
Yeah, I thought I would show you this, Councilmember. You see, most of those trees are outside of our property. So when they're outside the property, we really don't have the ability to move off-site and strip those down. So pretty likely you would see all those now. I say likely because I wouldn't say this is the exact dimensional drawing. So I hesitated a little bit because until the survey goes out there and actually surveys it, we don't know for sure. But it appears to me that, yeah, many of those would remain. And I know the Farzanis are very interested in keeping as many as possible.
Okay. That's one of the questions I've heard from some residents and stuff, just that, you know, it's nice there. And then the interconnectivity of the development, one of the things I wanted to make sure, and I'm pretty sure that this is the case, but that inside the development, people that live in the duplexes or the townhouses or the apartments, that they're able to walk to that gas station or walk to Highway Nine and get on Legacy Trail and go into town and whatnot, that that, that it is interconnected, sidewalks all connect, all that stuff to the, to Jenkins?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yes, Councilmember, it is. These are all separate lots, or not all of them, but many of these are separate lots. You see the different duplex lots and the different multifamily lots. Those would all have to have a sidewalk in front of them. By code, we have not asked for any variances from any sidewalks or anything, so they would all be interconnected and taken over to the artery on Jenkins and up to the intersection from there.
And on the subject of Jenkins, what type of improvements to Jenkins will be part of this development?
So there was initial discussion of perhaps considering a waiver of not doing them up to the arterial standards. And we met actually with Mr. Sturts and his staff and discussed that. It was decided that we would not move for any variance, that instead we would do it to the arterial requirements of your city. Now, there is, does remain a question as to whether we would, what we call defer it, meaning when we start building, do we actually build it then, or do we put up the money for the cost of it? And that gets into gap paving, if you recall that discussion sometimes over the years. But we have not asked for any waivers, so we would do it to the city standards that Mr. Sturts outlined for us as well. I should throw in the Cedar Lane discussion at that point, maybe you discussed. I do want to mention that tonight, that in the context of this site, you know, we have Jenkins over here and all of your city facilities. And I should mention one of the things Mr. Sturts was concerned about, that we didn't, he didn't support a waiver request, and we were fine with it when you described how there'd be heavy trucks coming from the transfer station and the composting station and those areas coming up this lane. So that made a lot of sense to us, and we took away the waiver request. There is that discussion that I know you are intimately familiar with is Cedar Lane. And Cedar Lane has the Bishop's Creek right at the bottom of that screen. It needs a bridge that I think I heard Mr. Sturts say was twenty-five million dollars or total project, twenty-five million dollars, something on the order of a large-scale project. That is off our site, so it's not something that we would be compelled to do at all. But something that has been floated, an idea, and we've discussed it a number of times over the years, is do you get out in front of this development before it starts construction, and do you propose a simple TIF that would be, a TIF that would build that bridge? We're ambivalent to it, frankly. It doesn't really affect this project, but it's been mentioned to us as a possibility. We're fine with it. We're open to it. We haven't requested that tonight. This is not part of the project tonight. But I think it's something that we've been discussed, asked to discuss, and we're okay with it. So if that day should come, we're open to that if the city wants to pursue that. And we all know how TIFs work. You tend to do it before it gets built, and then the add valour and the sales taxes generate that development. I don't know if it would be enough to build that bridge. I don't think we've looked at it in that detail at all, but something to think about in the future.
But potentially we could, and yes, the Cedar Lane issue goes way back, even before my time on council, but it's been one I've been working on for ten years and became real apparent that there was a problem last year when the tornado storm hit this area of Norman and Highway Nine and Highway seventy-seven were restricted, blocked off by debris and fall-in-lines and stuff. And there's only two ways out of the Eagle Cliff area, which is actually five different neighborhoods, Independence Valley, Eagle Cliff, Cedar Lane, Monterey, and Cedar Lane, and then multiple apartment complexes too. But there's only two ways out, Cedar Lane or Twelfth Avenue to Highway Nine, or Cedar Lane east across the tracks to Highway seventy-seven, and both were having problems, and people were lined up all the way down through Eagle Cliff, all the way down to Sage, waited, you know, an hour plus to try to get out of the neighborhood. So there's always been this push from that area for there to be a Cedar Lane connection west to Jenkins for another additional way in and out of the neighborhood that isn't blocked by a railroad crossing. And so that has been a big issue, and I know it was discussed in the kind of the preliminary discussions about this project proposal, about it might connect to Cedar Lane, and if so, we would need to construct it, obviously, and then Jenkins as well. And that's what prompted me last year to ask city staff to give that presentation about what would it cost to connect Cedar, to extend Cedar Lane west to Jenkins and then improve Jenkins from that connection all the way up to Highway Nine. And that number they gave was in the twenty-plus million dollar for the whole thing.
Yeah.
And so that is something that could be on a future bond program, or one of the discussions being, if this were in a TIF district, a TIF that goes towards the construction of a pretty vital piece of public infrastructure. of a pretty vital piece of public infrastructure, you know, so, which would fit really well into what I think the intent of a TIF would be. So, but that, but what you're saying currently is, this development does not have any connection to Cedar Lane, and-
Correct.
-there's no plans in this development to address that current situation.
That's correct, council member.
And then Jenkins, you know, the staff concern about, yes, the Animal Welfare Center is right there, the compost facility, the waste, the water reclamation plant is there, the police firing range is down there, the household hazardous waste facility is down there. And, yeah, a lot of industrial uses, trucks and stuff going in and out, and Jenkins being a two-lane country road still, basically. And it not being flat either, and having a pretty-
Yeah.
...interesting incline to it. So the, so you're saying that this development, you would be improving your side of the street potentially with curb, gutter, sidewalk, and widening it, I assume, on that side? And then a future project would probably be the other?
That's correct, council member. So the way it works is, we have to improve it to the adopted master plan that your city has adopted, that Mr. Sturts basically governs. So we would have to meet that as master plan. I remember in our meeting, there was a couple of different variations of it, I think three different variations of it. One was divided two-lane, I think, one was four-lane. You want to discuss? So it would be one of those variations that we would have to develop to, and that would really be determined at that time.
Okay.
Good evening, Scott Sturts, Director of Public Works. Yeah, in our new comprehensive transportation plan, there are three, this is a minor arterial roadway. There are three road sections that are acceptable. There's a divided, so with a median in two lanes in each way, so four lane, or a four-lane roadway, or there is an option for a three-lane roadway, so one lane each direction with a continuous center turn lane. In this case, we thought it was best to go ahead and reserve the right preliminary plat to have that as a four-lane section. And that would be, on their half of the roadway, they'd be required to do that half-road widening with a bike lane, all those options had bike lane included. And then the sidewalk. You know, of course, we are starting to look at in a lot of situations, when we have roadway like this, we've heard from a lot of our public, they prefer having a ten-foot-wide multimodal trail instead of the on-street bike lanes. So that's an alternative that we could also discuss. A lot of that would come out, as I came back with preliminary, or after the preliminary plat stage, at the final plat, we could start making those more detailed determinations. So with this plat, the applicant has agreed to come back, do the full road, show the road widening both on Cedar Lane and Jenkins to two lanes with bike lanes and sidewalks. We probably, if we got that far, and though we didn't have any motion on the Cedar Lane, we would take that as a deferral at that time. There are some new grant opportunities that we're starting to look at that may give us a pathway to move forward on this, this project. We could use that money towards those matching funds that would be required with that grant funding.
And do I understand that, just to make sure, there will be a fee paid towards a Cedar Lane project from this project?
Well-
Because it applies it, even though they're not connecting to it, but-
The requirement is, if you abut an arterial roadway, you're responsible as the developer for that half of the road widening. And so even though that is classified in the comprehensive transportation plan as a minor arterial, so even though the roadway's not there, they are responsible for that improvement to that section-lined road. And in this case, because it's not there, we couldn't ask them to widen if it's not there, but we would take that money as deferral and be able to use that towards payment, towards a future project as it became available.
Okay. And I would probably recommend the ten-foot multimodal path instead of a bike lane in this area. And I think probably because our, if I recall, our Trails Master Plan shows that a path going from, along Cedar Lane, connecting to Jenkins, and then going north and connecting to Highway nine, where Legacy Trail currently starts or ends and go, and that takes you all the way into downtown and all the way to the far northwest side of town.
We would prefer that also as staff. We worked with the applicant, the developer, at that time with the final plat. Remember, they will only do the improvements along that section that are platted adjacent at that time. So we won't see that full road widening at one time. So that'll be part of the consideration we have to look at also, whether to do that construction during their, that section that they're doing, or whether we would defer that to be able to do it as one larger project. And that's something we'll look at as the final plats come forward, and we see exactly what the extents of those improvements would be, so that we can make the best decision at that time for the improvements and for the roadway itself.
And staff feels comfortable with there being two new driveways on Jenkins? It will be improved, but that, I know they tried to get a access point on Highway nine, and were not able to get that approved.
Correct. The ODOT is, they had to go through all, ODOT to meet the requirements to have that access on a Highway nine. ODOT disapproved that. And we have looked at this, we've, traffic engineers looked at it, and we agree with their locations of their driveways. There may be some variances that will be required, but we support those variances if necessary.
Okay. Okay, I think that is all the questions I have for now. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Sean.
Yes. I had a question about traffic count, traffic, traffic study, and what the imagined traffic will be like over there.
I'm gonna ask BJ Hawkins to come up and address that, if you will, please, BJ.
Thank you, council member. As I'm sure most of you know, there's currently hardly very little traffic on Jenkins south of Highway nine. I think we collected seven-hundred cars total a day, which is comparable to maybe like a small neighborhood street. So there's really very little traffic right now. So most of the traffic that's going to be generated from this will be new traffic on that. As Scott said, and we've discussed, the extra trucks may, you know, cause a little bit of concern, and that's why they're opting for the four-lane roadway, give trucks a separate road to, you know, bypass. But some of the improvements we looked at, we analyzed Highway nine and Jenkins, and determined that there were some interim improvements that could be done in the short term, some middle-range during this project, which included widening at Highway nine and on Jenkins to create a new northbound left turn lane, and then southbound left turns at both the first two drives, which are the most, that would experience the most vehicles. That would kind of take them out of any sort of through lanes and prevent any sort of queuing onto Highway nine. Additionally, there is a long-term project that ODOT is working on right now. They're studying along Highway nine that could further release, relieve a lot of the congestion in the area. It's just still in the planning stage, so there's no necessarily date for that, but that's just kind of a long-term solution.
And I imagine this development will happen in stages, so all this traffic will not happen all at once.
Correct.
But, thank you.
Yep.
And then I would like to touch on stormwater, about the maintenance of the detention ponds. You know, people are very concerned about the impacts. As I understand, it's a property owners' association. Can you speak to that a little?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, council member. And I don't know if I have an image, I guess I don't, on every preliminary plat, every final plat, I should say. Actually, I think you'll see it, you can't really read on this, but if you look at the screen, right above the word Crafton on the bottom, there's a little stamp there that says stormwater, detention, facilities, maintenance, I think easement, I believe. That stamp gets put on every single plat in the city of Norman. That's been put on the plats since about 2008. And what that stamp says is that all stormwater facilities basically will be put under the maintenance governance of a POA. And that stamp further says that in the event that the POA does not maintain it, or fails, you have the authority to step in, in the shoes of that POA and deal with it. So that's a, pretty much a standard that we have on all of our plats now and have for sixteen years. And I don't know that you've ever invoked that plan that I recall, but it's there. And POAs, I know, are very cognizant of that and aware of it, and intend to do their job to make sure they're funded and act, act responsibly.
And then my next question, since council member Holman brought up the subject of a TIF, and I've talked with our finance director, and he said, don't imagine twenty million coming out of this, maybe one, two, five million, which could cover the design of a bridge that would, you know, provide a pathway to a public vote to actually fund one. But will this property all be the Farzani's, or will, if we get to that discussion point in the future, are we envisioning multiple property owners that would have to sign on to something like a TIF?
I don't think it would be anybody but the Farzani's. Of course, you're asking me to conjecture out to things that we don't really know about, I wouldn't say, but no plans that I'm aware of to put this in any other, any other name.
And I would just say to the thought about a TIF, and if the property is some Farzani's and maybe belongs to other people, I could also see some of those street improvements being covered, depending on what kind of TIF money could be generated here. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Another question that came up because of that traffic question. There's the two new driveways on Jenkins that go into the development, but then there's a third one that people would use to access the gas station. And it's a pretty, it looks like a pretty short distance from the Highway nine and Jenkins intersection to where people would turn into that gas station. So just wondering about people exiting off of Highway nine, and then they're immediately trying to turn left into that gas station. Is there an anticipated situation that could be evolved from that? People try and turn into the gas station, and they back up into, towards Highway nine?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, council member. I don't recall that this didn't meet the spacing requirements. I think we did. So as far as I'm aware, we met all the spacing requirements, and engineers are nodding yes on that.
And it would have, like you said, a left turn into it. Seeing it on here, it looks like-
Depends on the arterial standard, as to how it's built, when you would get to the final plating, as to whether that's built with a, with a situation like that or not. But as far as the spacing from the intersection is usually what we're looking at at this point, and it meets all of that.
Okay. I just am kind of thinking of if it's like backed up on Highway, backed up on Jenkins going north to Highway nine, and then people are coming off Highway nine, going south, and then trying to turn left or east into the gas station, and they start backing up towards Highway nine.
Yeah.
Do we end up in a situation there? And so-
Not that I'm aware of, council member.
Okay. Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have been concluded, council may choose to respond to your questions. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Catherine Allen. Okay, we'll move on to Dan Munson.
Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward six. So I think we should keep this as a I-1 property. I'm not comfortable with the distance from the wastewater treatment plant to residential. Wastewater equipment generates between ninety and a hundred and twenty decibel. A train horn is required to be between ninety-six and a hundred and ten decibel. So this equipment is essentially the same noise as a train horn. Wastewater plants smell terrible because they release gases like hydrogen sulfide, methane. People often describe the smell as rotten eggs or ammonia. If you've ever toured the plant, you'll know exactly what we're talking about. Did you know that wastewater treatment plant in Iowa had explosion last week? Last month in Santa Clara, California, there was another wastewater treatment plant that had an explosion. The city of Norman stores thousands of pounds of chemicals at our water reclamation facility that is located just across the road from the proposed development. These chemicals could pose a risk to residents in near proximity if there was a major chemical release. The government accountability office did a study, GAO 06390, and basically what they said in that is wastewater treatment plants are considered a terrorist target. I haven't thought about that recently, have we? Water treatment plants, wastewater are a terrorist target. Water treatment plants release three percent of our country's greenhouse gas emissions. Greenhouse gases primarily impact human health by contributing to the worsening of air quality through increased pollution, leading to respiratory issues like asthma, heart disease, lung cancer. We want to put a bunch of houses around that area? I don't think that's a good idea. Will the current plant support fifty thousand new residents? If not, where will the expansion come from? Are we gonna go north? Are we gonna go west? Do the utility easements support new sewer lines? Is there enough room? Sewer lines are massive in that part of town. I think there's a lot of questions that need to be asked and answered, and I think we need to-
Cynthia Rogers.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward four. I really appreciate Norman having, you know, a variety of citizens with a lot of expertise about things that I don't know about. So I appreciate, I was prepared to come up and say, all the things I really like about this. Mixed-use commercial housing, we need housing. This is sort of a commercial retail desert where people, there's a lot of activity. So as an urban economist, putting stuff where you have lots of people coming and going makes a lot of sense. Infill-ish because it's close to the utilities and the infrastructure that we already have, so not really sprawl. I like a lot of things about this. Even though you all were talking about a TIF, I like that it's not a TIF. If it can support itself, it can support itself. Although the TIF you were talking about was using this to support some other capital improvements, but it will contribute to the capital improvement fund, so you'll get money from it that way. But I do think the concerns about proximity to the wastewater treatment plant, I hadn't thought about those, because I don't go to this part of town very often. That does give me a pause. I don't, I don't know, we want commercial there either, so I guess I'm echoing that concern.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I was gonna say that it was unanimity day, given all the stuff that was going on on the dais before, but I think Dan did raise some excellent opposition points to this proposal, and I hope you will consider them. Nonetheless, I want to speak in favor of this project, because I think that adopting it makes a point that's generally underappreciated, which is that Norman doesn't need to buy development with big subsidies. Firms want to come to Norman to serve the demand that already exists here, no public money required. This particular site, I think, is really interesting, because it's close to Norman, or OU's current sports facilities, and it could develop into an entertainment district to serve OU fans, as well as a sort of more constant flow of people who work on OU's research campus, assuming that we don't screw it up. So this site is about two-thirds of the size of the sort of now-frozen entertainment district proposal in the North U N P. But if you take out the proposed arena from that project, you're looking at a pretty close-to-apples-to-apples comparison there, which I think's really interesting. If I were an investor, of course, I'd be worried about having my, in this particular program, about having competition subsidized for me, but I think a vote of the people will probably help us wage those fears. I do think it's important to push back a little against one of the claims in the narrative of the presentation so far, which is the projection of housing that was discussed. That's actually kind of a ridiculous argument, to be frankly, to be frank. Housing need is endogenous to the planning process, right? In other words, the development path that you choose will determine housing demand, and the market will determine what the housing supply is. And the quantity of houses that you're gonna get is gonna end up being an equilibrium result. You don't need to chase a particular number in a projection, because that's almost certainly going to end up being inefficient. But- But, you know, the main advantage of these houses, it looks like, is they're likely to be relatively small and more affordable. So that still looks like it's a reason to think that this particular proposal might be the one that the city of Norman should favor, and I would even think favor as a sort of substitute for developing in other greenfield areas of town for the reasons that Dr. Rogers mentioned. So if I were you, I'd ask some more questions about the stuff that Dan talked about and try to make a decision there, but other than that, this seems like a good idea to me. Thanks.
I'm not sure who might be wise or what, but the question that Mr. Munson brought up about proximity to the treatment plant is definitely one of the first things that crossed my mind when I first heard about this proposal a couple of years ago now, I guess is maybe two years ago. But my first thought was, because I've represented this part of Norman for a decade, I've definitely heard complaints over the years from the Eagle Cliff neighborhood about the smell and when the wind blows a certain way in the morning. And it's not just the treatment plant, the compost facility is there too, and I think that sometimes is even more of a factor in the smell than the plant is. And the more recent improvement project that was done to the treatment plant did have some odor stuff and I think has tamed it a little bit, for sure. I've gotten less complaints about it over the last couple of years, but that was one of my very first thoughts, though, when I saw this proposal. When they told me about it, I said, well, you know, how, I assume there's got to be some reason or you wouldn't want to do it, but it's like, how attractive is it going to be for people to live next to the wastewater treatment, you know, water reclamation plant, but it's a sewer treatment facility and does have some pretty heavy industrial uses and odors and things like that, and big trucks. And, and that was definitely a concern about not only just this section of Jenkins and the rural character of that road and the uses on it, but the facility, the treatment plant itself, its ability to expand in the future. And yes, the issue about utility right-of-way and that being preserved for the addition of bigger pipes if necessary. But if someone maybe wanted to talk about why is this an attractive area and given the concerns about its proximity to industrial uses like this?
Good response, Councilmember. I don't know if I'm the right person to ask that of you, but I can tell you what the applicant is thinking about that. First, I would point out, this is your map on the left of your 2025 planning, and if you see just south of our development, immediately across the street from your wastewater treatment plant and all of your city's facilities is planned L R R E, L R E S is low-density residential. So your planners actually have planned immediately south of Cedar Lane, right across the street from your facilities, low-density residential. Now, we haven't put low-density residential next to the facility. Instead, you see on the lower left, what we've done very intentionally is to put the office in really warehouse industrial as a buffer. We've left an industrial buffer between the city uses and the residential uses over to the east, and between those, we have a large area of detention and green space. So we think we have buffered it appropriately, and I would again add that your city plan actually has low-density residential closer to the wastewater treatment plant than what we're showing now.
Holman, a thought, Mr. Mattingly and his crew can share with you in great detail chemicals that, that are typically maintained on-site. If you look at the western boundary of the wastewater treatment facility on Chautauqua, you'll notice there is residential development on, on the other side of the plant and has been for many, many years. There is also commercial development at Chautauqua and Highway Nine. So what is proposed on the east side of that block of a lot of public services is not too different than what you already see developed on the west side of that whole block of city services, and, and that's even closer to the composting operation. What we see in, even in other metro cities, full residential development on three sides of the municipal wastewater treatment facility. It's, it's common, we, if staff had concerns, we would have shared those concerns early on in this development proposal process. So we don't have those safety concerns, and I, I do think, yeah, staff works diligently to control, you know, odor and traffic volumes and that kind of thing generated at the plant. So our confidence is high.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I don't know if, Chris, if you'd like to say anything about or address any of the comments or anything.
Chris Mattingly, Utilities Director. Yeah, we do worry aesthetics of just being a good neighbor, but you're correct, we have odor control on our facility, and we built it with this last expansion. What that means is we have like a vacuum being pulled over some of our more smelly areas, the headworks right there where it comes in, and we constantly pull a draft off of that and pipe that air through some carbon and a filter media to try to remove that. And I'll be happy to talk with Dan more about what chemicals he has concern of. The only ones I can think of, we do have potash and we have a chlorine gas that we put in the water, and when we send it over to the non-potable water supply to the OU golf course, we try to disinfect it before we send it over, but we really don't, we're biological, so we don't add many chemicals at this, at this facility. So, but I'll be happy to discuss with him further to make sure we, I've thought of everything.
Okay. Thank you. I would just comment that I do appreciate that question being asked because I think it really is relevant. When putting residential stuff near a use like these can have some negative impact down the road. But I do think this is a better use of the property than industrial. I did, you know, years ago, there was a kind of debate in Norman about industrial property and is there enough of it in Norman left if we were to get something big? And that was one of the first questions I asked city staff too was, do you, would we feel comfortable giving up this amount of industrially zoned property? Do we anticipate that we might need it or not? The indication to me was that not likely and not in this particular spot, probably. And so there was, I guess, comfort in rezoning this and not having it industrial anymore. And given the housing needs that we know we have, we're really pushing mixed use and connectivity. The residents in the area know that although I think they would like for it to stay in open field, that this would be much more amenable than having an industrial use next to them, a potential factory or whatnot. And unlike the, not to go real into the past, but the issue with Eagle Cliff and the Potts Farm, you know, in that case, we were dealing with property that was zoned agricultural currently and is a much less intense use than residential, and a debate about whether to rezone it to, to residential and build houses and floodplain issues and stuff like that. But in this case, it's not agricultural, it is industrial, and this would be a less intensive use than the current zoning that could be developed by right. And so I feel pretty satisfied with the answers I've heard, with the concerns I had, and I am going to support this project, and I do think it is worth noting as well that it is a project that is not asking us for any public improvements, it's not asking for a TIF. That's been a discussion among council about how to address some public infrastructure issues that already kind of exist in that area with Cedar Lane and whatnot. So it's a great example, I think, of, it's close to a lot of things we have, like the research campus, the current Lloyd Noble Center, and whatever the future is there. But even without Lloyd Noble Center, you know, brand-new softball stadium near here, the baseball stadium is getting remodeled, rowing and the golf course and all the improvements that we've made to Reeves Park and that we have planned for Reeves Park down the road. This area of Norman's not going to, even if there's an arena somewhere else, I don't foresee the activity in this area decreasing much, if at all, and probably will see much more development on the research campus. And so this could help service that area and the neighborhoods that are in the area and the campus area. So given the options and choices, I think this is a good proposal for us to consider, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
And to answer another question or concern that Mr. Munson had, me and Mr. Mattingly actually sat down about a month ago. We take emergency preparedness, especially terrorism awareness, very seriously, and we had sat down probably a month, maybe two months at the latest, and talked about that exact issue as far as any kind of terror attack on our water supply, on the actual water treatment plant. And I'm not going to get into details, I'm giving crazy people ideas, but we have contingencies for numerous, numerous things. The safety insecurity out there is paramount to Mr. Mattingly, and so we make it as hard as possible for anybody to do anything stupid like that. So I just wanted to say that we are thinking about it and think about it every day, so.
Am I good? Um, I am supportive. I really like the mixed use and opportunity to generate sales tax on this is greater than it would have been in the other way. I'm appreciative that the self-storage, the flex office warehouse distribution is placed thoughtfully. What I really like is that there's not all R1 and that you have some missing middle in this plan. So I will be supporting this. Thanks.
Is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been. Adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. And just as a note, Councilmember Holman, do you want that put on your agenda for CPTC to talk about bridges in that area and that kind of thing?
Over a year almost.
While I think about it and don't forget.
Thank you.
Item number 27, an ordinance rezoning property located at the southeast corner of Highway Nine and Jenkins Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. This is a companion item to previous items, a previous item. Are there any further questions from council? Hearing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this item?
We have Catherine Allen, which I'm assuming she didn't come tonight, Dan Munson, and Stephen Ellis. Okay, that would be all.
Nothing else from council? Okay. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may pass, cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Have a motion in second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been. Adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 28, a preliminary plat for Sooner Villages, a planned unit development located on the southeast corner of State Highway Nine and Jenkins Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Second.
Have a motion in second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council? Seeing none. Any for members of the public? Is anybody signed up?
Still the same people, Dan Munson or Stephen Ellis. Okay. Oh, let me turn my second page there, Dan. Yes, you are, Evan, I'm sorry.
Say that I would support this as well, and I think it's another example of an opportunity where if we had some incentives to promote food foresting and maximal usage of our soil, it might help a little bit.
Anybody else? That's it? Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Manatoya, before we start the next item, would you like to read a disclosure?
Yes. So items 29 and 30 are related requests to remove and replay and replace a PUD and then a preliminary plat of land located south of East Cedar Lane Road and 24th Avenue Southeast. So anyway, one of the co-applicants is a client of my firm, and the City of Norman Ethics Ordinance directs council members to recuse on items in which they have an actual conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest, or to disclose a possible conflict of interest on a particular item to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest. I've consulted with the city attorney's office on this matter, and while I do not have a pecuniary interest that may vary with the outcome of council's decision on this item, it is possible that a conflict of interest could be perceived due to my firm, due to one of the co-applicants being a client of my firm. And at this time, I want to affirmingly state that I intend to cast my vote on these items, but I will not incur a benefit, detriment, or financial consequence from the item from, regardless of my vote on this item.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 29, an ordinance rezoning property generally located south of East Cedar Lane Road and east of Classen Boulevard from PUD Planned Unit Development District to a new PUD Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation? Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Let's go to the next slide here. I'm sorry, I should have forwarded that before. So we're over on Classen for this one that we will go to right here. Okay, so this one's going to be a little bit like deja vu. It was literally just about 14 months ago, we were here in front of you on this item for approval. It is the same site, don't be confused. Before, we were here on South Classen, just south of Cedar Lane and south of the Walmart with an Armstrong Bank, you might recall. And so that's the site tonight, same site, it's about a 40-acre site. No problem. Previously rezoned in 2023 from I-1, this was a full I-1 site previously, to a PUD. We're back tonight just for a very specific tweaking of some amendments because what has happened since then is we have a mainline user that has come on board to use a large part of the remainder site, and I'll get into that in just a moment to show you. But what you're amending tonight is just the PUD. You are adopting a preliminary plat too, I should say, but the first item is an amendment to the PUD to deal with a site plan amendment, with some signage requirements, with private roads instead of public roads on the interior, and with outdoor storage in which I'm going to ask you to do a friendly amendment to make sure we have that in the PUD document. So I'll take you through it here. This is the site, again, I always like to show you GIS. It is a pure, clean site, no WQbz, no floodplanes on this site whatsoever. It is a simple, flat, relatively low-slope site. That's the context, and the context, most importantly, just north of us is a large Walmart supercenter. This was one that got put in many years ago, and this site has been vacant next to it all these years. The links you see to the east, and you see significant residential development happening all to the west as well. That is ongoing and has been pushing pretty hard over time. So this area of, as you are well aware, this area of southeast Norman is probably the fastest-growing population area in our city, probably by far, and has been for quite some time. So with that, with rooftops, we've always said, comes retail, comes commerce, and indeed that is happening here. So you've seen significant commercial development up and down Classen, and what's about to happen on this site is really quite incredible. This is a larger area of. really quite incredible. This is a larger area of context. You see, just south of our site is a development that you also approved recently. This was the Liberty Park, a large RV park just south of it. The links again, you see over there. I did want to mention just south of us is Noble, which is seeing significant development. On the right side of that screen, on the lower end, you see some dirt areas there. Those are large neighborhoods going through right now in development. We're working on some of those projects. So very likely Noble is going to be built out solid with homes all the way up to their boundary line, and not very, very distant future likely. So this area not only is going to see commercial use from our citizens, but also very likely from the Noble citizens to our south. This is the site plan that you're asking to be formally amending. I'll show you a much better graphic here in just a moment. But you see, the center of the screen is what has changed. And I'll show you a comparison side by side in just a moment. But basically, we still have a lot of green space on this. The previous PUD that you approved was about 34% green space. This one is about 29.7%, so about 4% difference or so between the PUDs. Nothing terribly significant. And what you'll see in just a moment, what really happens is we have more green space along the backside of it and a little bit to the north, and then the center area has become more what is being used for a large end scale, end user. And the large end user, we're not allowed to say today, please forgive me, we are under an NDA, we're not allowed to disclose who that is. But I will tell you, it's a remarkable user, that I have grown up in Norman all my life, and I've often heard that the east side of town, not saying this is true, but I've heard it, you've heard it, the east side of town doesn't get the top-end retailers, the restaurants. Well, that's about to change. With this end user, you're about to see something that I think a lot of people will be amazed to see come to southeast Norman and east Norman, and with it will bring even more of those types of users. And I think that's a testament to the day has come where the population of this area has grown and the demographics to a point that is now attracting these types of users. So a remarkable development that is coming. And again, the change is that we have an end user that is ready to go in. Here's that in context. You see the Walmart to the north, and so it is another big-box user that's coming to the south of them. And you see in the center, really, the center part is everything about this large big-box user that's coming to line up so that we've, this is very intentional site planning. In fact, they really drive the site planning here in a lot of ways. When you're dealing with end users like this, they tend to come to you and say, that's our site plan, and we're not doing anything different. And that really is the case. But very significant planning here in that they've lined it up with the Walmart so that there's sightlines from the intersection to the northwest, and there's good visibility and access points all across the front of this. Zoom in a little closer. And so basically, again, the changes really are just in the center. I'm going to show you side by side in just a moment, but this shows you up close, as close as we can show it. The links to the right, South Classen Boulevard to the left. Now, South Classen, you've seen a lot of commercial development happening north of Cedar Lane. We've seen a number of new uses right north of Cedar Lane. I think once this happens, you will see all of those properties on the left of Classen probably evolve to much more higher-end uses, I would suspect, once this goes in. And I think you'll see this become even more of a major commercial corridor as it comes up and down Classen Boulevard in this area. The center is a private drive. This end user really requires that they are in control of the drives, and that's for aesthetic reasons, so that they can make sure that they are taken care of in very fine fashion and in a very good look. There are parking areas in the center there. You see what we've talked about with you, a large parking area. But I will tell you, if you see all of those green dots in the center, that is far more landscaping islands than you require by your standards. So they've actually produced more landscaping islands in the center of their parking lot than you would normally require. They've lined up the street at the bottom. I can't, I don't really have a pointer on this, but on the bottom, you see where the links comes in. So that street lines up with the link street. And so users over in the links can simply walk down their sidewalks and then cross 24th Avenue right into this development and onto the sidewalks for this development and get into the zone where there are restaurants and this large end retail user. So I think it's planned fairly well. You will see side by side, here is the change. And before, what happened was, and let's talk about that, remember when we stood before you before, you have a requirement in your code that says, even though we were only at that time doing an Armstrong bank, which is about an acre, your requirement says we have to pre-plan the entire site. That's your law. And we're not bemoaning that, but that's what happens. Well, what happens when we do that is, in this case, it's a perfect example of, well, we really only had one user. We had a bank. We didn't know what the rest of it would be. And so at that time, we simply, the engineers and the user go to work and just sort of put out what they think might happen. They don't really know, though. There's no way to know. But what happened since then is this end user showed up and said, we want to make this happen. When that happens, as we've told you before, we have a site plan change. And as we've said before with PUDs, when you adopt a site plan, as you did on the left, if we come back with something significantly different, we have to come back to you for a site plan amendment. And therefore, we're here tonight. So the change is to change the site plan to that. And before, those streets in the middle that you see on the left were public roads. Now, on the right, they are private. Now, they're basically built to be similar, but they would be maintained by the private development and the POA. Now, tonight, we are asking for a friendly amendment. It was made aware to us that since planning commission, so since the PUD document itself was recommended approval unanimously at planning commission, it was discussed with staff, is there going to be any outdoor storage or garden centers or anything like that with this in retailer or possible retailers on this site? And it was said, yes, it may be. And so staff requested us to come tonight and ask you for a friendly amendment. It is in your packet. It's in your PUD, in your documents. It's already written in there. We would just ask you to make a motion to amend the PUD to say that it will include the uses of garden center and outdoor storage as written here. Or perhaps you could just say as written into the PUD in the document on your agenda. That's all we would really need to make sure that it's legally put into place. So in summary, it was previously rezoned. Again, we're only asking for changes to the site plan, the signage that this retailer needs, private roads, and outdoor storage, if you would please do the friendly amendment to put that into place. There are no filed protests. We're not aware of any protests. I don't believe we've had anybody show up to protest at anything. And this received unanimous planning commission when it went through for that approval. With that, we're happy to answer any questions. Terry Haynes, the engineering team is here, and we can answer those questions as well. Thank you very much.
Hi. Yes, you know, appreciate the work that has gone into this. I just have a question about stormwater, since we are going down to 29%. What changes might have happened on that front, given the amendment that's coming forward?
Terry Haynes, come on up and tell us about the changes you made to the stormwater.
Good evening, Terry Haynes, SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main Street, Oklahoma City. Nice to see you all this evening. No change. We still have two dry detention ponds. There's no flume in the bottom of the pond because we want to take advantage of the particulates settling out within the grassed areas. But there's no change really between the two. We had two detention ponds on the original plan in 2023. We have two detention ponds planned on this one as well. Two different drainage basins, they flow in two different directions, so we can encapsulate the stormwater coming off the parking lots, run it through the detention ponds, which works as a self-sufficient bio swell in its own merit before it's discharged on downstream.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the questions I have.
Okay, the, you might talk a little bit more maybe about that in previous surface and open space. What percent of the total is open space? And what is the comparison of this one to the previous?
Yeah, so on this one, councilmember, it's 29.7% green space. On the previous one, it was 34-point something. So I guess that's actually roughly about 5% difference.
And when he was talking about the dry detention, so the previous one had two, but on this one, I see three. Is one of them not, or is one of them got, is it full detention all the time?
You're talking about up on the right side?
Yeah.
Terry, those are both dry, I think, right? Yeah. Two on the upper right and one on the lower left. Yeah, so, and Terry can come out and explain more than me. But basically, there's a ridge line across this site. So this site drains to the northeast. There you go.
And you're right. I did say two overall. Those two ponds on the right-hand side, they're split, but they're actually combined. I still, from an engineer's perspective, I look at it as one.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, and then the, so the parking lot part, which is a part, part parking, part stormwater. The parking, the applicant is aware that we don't require a minimum anymore.
Correct.
And they are including the amount of parking they think they need. Is that right?
That's correct, councilmember.
And outside of the parking in front of this large retailer, the out parcels, those are not, those could change. As far as the parking, could be less, they could be.
That's correct.
They could be also residential, that there is flexibility that if they decide to and there's demand, they could develop apartments still for housing.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, councilmember. We did leave in the allowance for residential uses. We thought that was important in case some of this ends up being some residential uses, perhaps some mixed uses. We still have some ability to do that. Maybe a site plan change if it was a significant change on the site plan, but we did leave that use. As to parking amounts, you know, it's been an interesting time to watch that happen since, much to the council's leadership, you took away the requirements of the minimums. And we, in the development community, we were curious, how will that play out? Will it actually function that way? Will people come forward with uses that are far less parking? And I will tell you, it's really happened that way. In fact, I didn't think I would see it, but I can tell you, I'm thinking of one particular one, and I won't mention it to you, but it's already come through the process. But it showed so little parking that we were criticized for not having enough parking. And I didn't think I'd ever see that day. But it came through that way. People were like, well, are you sure you have enough parking there? And the applicant was very confident of it. And so I think what's played out is exactly as you envisioned, in that applicants now are looking at it and saying, what do I need to make this work? They certainly don't want to overbuild it. Costs a lot of money to do that. But they don't want to underbuild it either, because then it potentially hurts their development capacity. So I think it's worked. And I think, to your point, as these other ones come on board on the periphery, they may come up with far less parking as well. We just don't know until they show up. But now that the code allows for them to basically set their own parking count, they can do that.
So in the fore, we were requiring more than people may have needed, and that's why you may see very large parking lots in areas of Norman that are very sparsely used and are never full.
Yeah.
Even on the busiest shopping day of the year, there's a lot of available parking in some of those. But they were having to comply with.
Yeah.
A city standard.
Well, let me add to that a little bit. What you'll see in practice is, you know, the parking code before was, you know, it had different uses, but for instance, let's take office. It had one count for an office. I believe it was one car per 300 feet. Well, what you see in practice, though, is office uses can be very different parking needs. You know, we've seen it with, for instance, some medical office uses have large parking needs. Torres, an office use that is maybe more of a, just a professional services office, has very little parking needs. So even within those categories, as you previously had in your code, it really didn't fit the use. It was better for the applicant to decide what fit that use.
It was just a blanket use or based on square footage or whatever, but.
Very much so.
Okay. And with this parking lot as it's drawn, the, touched on a little bit, the green, green spaces in the parking lot, the, when I met with Gunner, the kind of responses, those weren't designed yet, but I had asked, will those little islands have the cutouts? And then will they be a raised curb, first off? Will they have cutouts in them, if so, where the water from the parking lots drain into those?
Yeah. I don't think we're to that level of detail yet to decide that, but it's certainly something we could, we could look to do as well.
Okay. That's, and Daryl's familiar with this, the Hanford, California ordinance, where Daryl was previously city manager. And I was there visiting last summer and came across a Walmart supercenter there. And it was unlike anything I'd ever seen, actually. The parking lot had these stalls every, I don't know, four or five parking spaces. So the entire Walmart parking lot was covered with trees, a tree canopy basically along every row. And I remember messaging Daryl and saying, hey, I'm out here in Hanford and I saw this, the best parking lot I've ever seen, I guess. And it's in the, you know, San Joaquin Valley. It can be very hot there. And so thinking about people walking back and forth, but they also had cutouts in the curbs on these islands, and the parking lots drained into them. So they not only watered the trees, I know we have a different climate here than in central California, but that not only did it help with the stormwater drainage and keeping, not pushing it to the edges, but collecting it, kind of watering the plant, the trees and stuff, and also creating a kind of environment where people weren't having to trek across a massive asphalt parking lot in the, you know, July in Oklahoma type thing. So and Gunner did clarify that it wasn't quite to that detail yet, but I think that's something, we haven't changed an ordinance to do that, to require that anything. It's just something we've been talking about.
Right.
But I think it would be very helpful and beneficial to be able to deal with the water that way and just have it not be just an entire giant concrete slab or, you know.
Yeah.
And then the connectivity part of it, the, what we touched on a little bit when I met with Gunner, is at the entrance of this retailer, there seems to be a path that connects the front of it to that private road towards the out parcels. And assuming that, that then connects to a sidewalk that connects people to the out parcels and to Classen.
Correct.
Highway 77, that's, is that the way I?
Correct. It's hard to see and.
And it looks like there's two of them.
I don't have a pointer here, but it is coming right through the middle of that parking lot, left to right, angling up a little bit to the right. And you see sort of a grayish rectangle there. I think that's the zone you're talking about, councilmember.
Yes.
And that's exactly what that is, a sort of an area that comes out from the main entry and extends through the parking lot.
That's, that just kind of fits in with, again, the connectivity part of it. It's definitely car-centric, which I don't love, but if we can make sure that the inside of it is as interconnected as possible so that people at least have the option to walk around in it, and depending on if there's restaurants or whatnot in the front part, and they need to go shop for a minute, they could without having to get in their car and drive. So I do like that aspect of it too. And I just want to clarify that there was interconnectivity, there will be sidewalks on all that stuff. And then you mentioned that there is an allowance for residential use, because I think many of us that were on council last year, you know, at least for me, I'll speak for myself, but one of the main reasons I voted for that plat was the housing addition, a part of it, and, you know, more apartments, and we need more housing. And I thought that was a pretty good use. And so it was a little disappointing to see the housing part removed, but the fact that it is adaptable and flexible to where the out parcels could be developed into apartments, if that's what they, the site is the best way.
Correct, councilmember. The use is still in the PUD as an allowable use.
Okay. And then we talked a little bit too about, you know, how we 77, Classen in this area has developed into, there's a lot of fast food. It's got a lot of growth, but it's like, you know, fast food and drive-through fast food. It's kind of like that, what's going on. And some concern is, is this whole quarter just going to be a bunch of commercial corporate chains that aren't based in Oklahoma and are a bunch of fast food places. And so one of the things that Gunner mentioned was, yes, that's kind of what we've seen on the north part, because there's not an anchor tenant. It's just kind of random. But in this section, it's possible we may see, I don't know, upscale, but more than drive, probably not drive-throughs maybe, and more potential sit-down restaurants or services like that.
Yeah, we don't have anything tonight to offer that to you, but I will tell you, this user tends to attract that. Yes, I think it's pretty likely you will see a much different complexion that comes with this than has been. than, than has been there before.
Okay. And then the last one, I think, was the, along 24th Avenue, right there. It's still a, for the most part, it's still just a, not even, it's kind of a two-lane country road still. Are any improvements to 24th Avenue anticipated with this development? And how does it abut 24th Avenue? Is there going to be any type of fencing? Is there going to be anything like that?
Yeah, let me ask Terry or BJ to come up, talk about 24th Avenue development and what our plans are for that and how it comes across the side of that development. I want you to discuss some details about that.
Thank you, Sean. Much like the previous development, we're along a section line road or a partial road that, where we have half-street widening. Today, it's only two lanes. So yeah, the proposal is, as, as this develops, and more than likely all along 24th Avenue, we'll widen it, that extra two lanes, make sure that it complies with the arterial section.
And that would include a sidewalk along 24th Avenue, I assume?
Yes, sir. And if I may, on the sidewalk, it is difficult to see in the drawing, but that internal private street, we're proposing sidewalks on both sides of that private street.
Perfect.
The interconnectivity within the parking lots, it also meets proag as well as our local accessibility standards. And there's a sidewalk along Classen, all along the front
That would be part of this proposal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, no, no improvements anticipated to Classen, it's already five-
It's already widened.
Already too wide.
It already meets the capacity.
Yeah.
And, and, and we were pursuing a traffic signal at that main driveway. We've had discussions with ODOT and with the city support. We certainly think this is the best location for a signal mid-block, although we are also aware of the future developments to the south, but they're not pursuing it as hard as we are to place the signal at that mid-block driveway.
Okay. And yes, I do recall the discussion about that traffic signal. And I guess the stance from ODOT is after you build it, we'll see.
That's their stance, that's their policy today, yes, sir.
Once we build it, if we see if there's a traffic problem, then we'll put it in.
Correct. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and put in the infrastructure, just in case they say yes today after we open.
And this development would be paying the cost of that signal station?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant, make an amendment?
Yes, I would like to amend the PUD narrative. Exhibit E for the garden center and outdoor storage and/or outdoor display, noting that covered shaded open outdoor storage and/or display areas should not be considered building coverage areas for purposes of determining building coverage within the property.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion. And second, is there any discussion from council on amendment? I'm not going to repeat the whole thing. Okay, here it is. The proposed floor amendment consists of two following additions to the existing allowable uses in exhibit E, a garden center, outdoor storage, and outdoor display, noting that the covered shaded open outdoor storage and/or display areas shall not be considered building coverage areas for the purposes of determining building coverage within the property. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Cast, and the amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more questions from council or? Okay. Is there an opportunity for members of the public?
We have Trey Kirby.
Kirby, Ward five.
I just had a question, because they don't want to tell us what they're going to build there. And there's going to be like outside storage. Is it gonna, can you at least tell us what it's going to be? Like, is there going to be fertilizer, feed, hay, chlorine? You know, like what kind of chemicals are going to set on that concrete? Because when it rains and that does flow off, it's coming straight to my farm. So just kind of wondering what that garden center is going to have sitting on it chemical-wise, if, if we could find anything out about that.
Cynthia Rogers?
Sorry. Still Ward four, still Cynthia Rogers. This is just, you know, another sort of big box strip mall, anywhere America sort of thing. I think the most remarkable thing about the discussion concerning this made by the applicant's representative is emphasizing the point that retail follows market demand and demographics. So in comparison with the arena TIF, I think that is promising 140,000 square feet of commercial retail at a big cost to taxpayers. And this is a non-TIF, just let the market develop sort of thing. I think that's the way to go. Do I think more strip mall development, you know, anywhere America makes Norman better? No, but, you know, it's private investment. So I don't really see a reason you can reject this. I can only lament that it's not really making Norman more homey. Thank you.
Stephen Ellis. Evan Dunn?
Thank you, council. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, Ward seven. I would probably support this, but I'd like to also reiterate that all green space is not created equal. You know, there's high intensity, high energy maintenance green space. And then there are other ways of designing green space so that it's low energy maintenance. And I think if we differentiated that and legislated something, people talk about how you can't legislate morality, but I think legislating efficiency is legislating morality.
I just have a question for the applicant. I know you're limited on what you can talk about, but in terms of the garden center, I don't imagine this is like a Lowe's situation. Are we talking like selling patio furniture? Or would you see fertilizer, compost, feed?
Yeah, I'm, difficult to say. Our request would just be as worded there. It would basically be compatible to retail uses that I think you're probably familiar with, retail uses that have garden centers and things of that nature.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that same question, that was something I asked Gunner about, just because I remember the East Side Walmart and a resident that lives across the street from it, at the end of Main Street, where it dead ends. And I don't know if he's as persistent as he used to be, but I think he used to complain pretty often about trash coming off the parking lot from Walmart onto his property. Things like fertilizer and mulch and all sorts of stuff that they might store outside sometimes. And I think we have regulations about how that's
Yeah.
handled. But that is a good question. It is, it's one I thought about, too, that when Gunner mentioned that this might be an amendment, just addressing what are our regulations in regard to that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I, I think you have a code problem at that point. If we are, if we are propagating trash or some sort of a negative use off of our site, I would think you have a code compliance issue that you could address with us at that point. I've certainly seen over the years, those, those code letters go out when there is trash coming off of a site or things of that nature. So I think you have the vehicle you need to come after that if you need to.
Does the company, whoever they are, do they have probably internal controls about that type of stuff?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is to adopt the amended ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the amended ordinance on final reading.
Motion to, second.
A motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance, the amended ordinance. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
The motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 30, a revised preliminary plat for Armstrong Bank Consolidated Project, a planned unit development generally located 800 feet south of Cedar Lane Road between Classen Boulevard, US Highway number 70, 24th Avenue Southeast. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion approved. Second?
Have motion and second. This is companion item to the previous item. Is there, are there any further questions from council regarding that item?
Yeah. Just that I agree with lament about, you know, kind of more big box suburban strip mall type development. And I think we're making a lot of progress and changing. We're talking about our zoning and, you know, that goes back to the 1950s and our regulations that require, in a lot of parts, the default is this type of development, you know, in big parking lots and things all separated out like that, and places where people have to drive to get to them, I think are all things that we're working on trying to improve in Norman. And I definitely, I would have preferred that this be mostly residential as we had approved originally. But it's, it is really difficult, I think, for the council to pass up something like this, because we are in the only state in the country that forces cities to operate on sales tax rate. And a big retailer or a couple of them like this is something we would not want to go to Noble or another community. And, and I have no doubt a lot of Noble residents will shop here, which is not going to be good for Noble if all these new people that are building houses in Noble are spending all their sales tax dollars in Norman. So good for us, maybe not as good for their town. But because of that situation and how our budget is, we have to, we have to kind of take proposals if they come up, especially if they're not asking for us to contribute anything as far as a direct contribution to an incentive or anything like that. There will be infrastructure improvements that will be needed to service this area for sure, and ongoing maintenance. But the interior road being private, which I have a little bit of concern about, too, if it, if it isn't kept up as well and people start complaining to the city about it, you know. But yeah, I, I wish it was a bit more dense and urban than it is, but I think it's an opportunity we kind of have to take, given our situation. So thanks.
Thanks. All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. Has anybody signed up for this question?
We have Trey Kirby again. Ben Plummer?
So Ben Plummer, Ward four. I just want to read something. So permeable, permeable asphalt is a type of pavement, pavement that's porous and allows water to pass through it. It's made of asphalt cement and coarse aggregate that's open graded with enough open spaces to make it highly permeable. Permeable asphalt is also known as green pavement. It's an eco-friendly option that can be used in a variety of conditions, including hot climates, low-traffic areas, and high-speed traffic areas. That whole site, all that concrete could be used to store water. So that's all I really have to say about that. I wish this had some housing. I don't think there's going to be any housing here. And there's no connectivity to the Walmart, like, there's no pedestrian path.
Evan?
Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion. Remarks can be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we'll start with Trey Kirby.
I was just gonna, so I do like a little rent-a-goat thing sometimes, where I'll take goats out and leave them people's yards and they clean up, you know, that way you get fertilizer and get rid of stickers, no chemicals, you know, all that. The other day, I had to come into Norman and pick some up and bring them home, because somebody had called in about dogs. And the pound, I guess, or whoever, the code enforcement said, well, you can't have goats in town. It's not in our ordinance nowhere, though, you know. They said, well, it's under a farm animal. So is chickens. Not only do they clean up, they also offer milk. They offer food. They offer a lot of benefits, and they don't hurt nothing. So I was wondering, when y'all are rezoning everything and you're switching stuff from, you know, residential and rural and farmland and all that, that's something y'all might consider, because like where I live right now, it's not really that far outside of town. So if y'all went tomorrow and say, because of the AIM project, you rezoned a lot of stuff, what's going to stop my neighbors from coming over and calling, say, code enforcement on me and going, hey, he's got 12 goats in his backyard and two cows? Because that's my milk, that's my meat, you know, that's a lot of stuff. So when y'all's doing all this rezoning, would y'all consider us small little farmers and other local people who want healthy food for their families? You know, some people enjoy going out in the morning, milking a goat, taking any glass of milk, having fresh milk. It don't hurt nobody to have that goat in the backyard. And it's not like I'm asking for swine or anything like that, but if you have time, would you consider that when you're rezoning stuff, that it does affect other small farms? Thank you.
Dan Munson?
Dan Munson, Ward six. So I'd like to speak in favor of Mr. Rick Knighton to be the city attorney. I believe he has represented Norman very well over the years. I find him to be very professional. I think he does an incredible job of, of showing how adaptable he can be, especially when there's really tough subjects that have to take place. And, you know, he can hit the ground running immediately. He, there's, there's not going to be any ramp-up time. There's not going to be any surprises for him. And so when this comes to a vote, I ask each of you to, to pull the yes trigger for having him be our, our city attorney. Switching topics. So there's, obviously, there's been a ton of, apparently Scott didn't like that. Apparently, there's been a ton of discussion about the number of, you know, single-family homes that we're going to need. I think 1,100 is the number that's been thrown out. I want to run some stats by you guys. Boston, Massachusetts has a population of 694,000, and they have 48 square miles. Miami, Florida has a population of 667,000, and they have 36 square miles. Philadelphia has 1.6 million people, and they have 134 square miles. Washington, DC has 700,000 people, and they have 61 square mi- Washington, D.C. has 700,000 people and they have 61 square miles. Long Beach, California has 462,000 people and they have 50 square miles. Seattle, Washington has 753,000 people and they have 84 square miles. Norman is significantly larger than every single city that I just talked about. Now granted, we have a lake and we're going to try to protect our watershed, but there is plenty, plenty of land in the city of Norman to build on. Okay? So when developers come up here and say, oh, we need all this, you know, we have to use every square inch, I think tonight's first approval out by the wastewater treatment plant, I think there's so many better places in Norman to build than that for residential.
Ben Plummer.
So just to piggyback on that, there's a great book called Green Metropolis, which talks all about how to create sustainable cities. But what I really wanted to talk about is, I wanted like an update. Last two weeks ago, I came here and I suggested an ordinance, and I just wanted to know if anyone's talked about that, where that's at.
We can't answer you during this part. I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Cynthia Rogers.
Hi, me again. I wanted to thank the city for the improvements along Alameda, which now has bike lanes on both sides between Porter and 12th, which usually ride on the sidewalks because that's crazy road. And also major sidewalk improvements because it was a little bit difficult to navigate in a wheelchair from my house to the shopping district there. So now that's all been taken care of. So I really appreciate that. I have a suggestion that perhaps Mr. Kirby's goats could go and do a cleanup on the, what used to be the camp that was closed down on Alameda next to the church there. It's kind of overgrown and brushy and it's probably really hard to cut, but I think his goats could probably take care of that at a really low cost. So I really like the idea of green initiatives and, you know, his goats need to eat, we need it cleaned up. So I'll lay that out there for whoever's in charge of keeping that land maintained. It's a little bit of an eyesore, so, you know, we give people notices to clean up their property and that's a little bit weedy. And then the other, my last comment is that, you know, when we think about housing and having some sort of manifest destiny of we have to have housing for this many people, that's, that's really kind of like, you plan for, the market will take care of things. So what we really need to take care of is our watershed and our stormwater and then we allow whatever kind of housing, whatever number of accommodations that we can do to happen. As opposed to, we have to build, 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 build houses because people are coming. If you build, 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 build houses everywhere you can, whether it's sustainable or not, people will come and then you have problems. So that was one of my big concerns with the AIM Steering Committee, and I was on the Housing Subcommittee because it sort of started with an assumption, which is just census straight line projections of population. And I don't, you know, if you, you plan to make that happen, it happens, but maybe we could plan for denser development or higher quality or missing middle sorts of stuff. So I can talk more about that later when we talk about the AIM Committee, but that's just sort of a, just a warning that I'll probably bring that up. Thank you.
Richard Baxter.
Shake your head. How you guys doing? My name is Baxter, founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. We're a nonprofit and a registered student organization at OU. I am a student at OU. Semester's over, I have straight A's, I just want to let you guys know that. And our motto is real not woke. Let me tell you our joke for today. So what did the chef skunk say, call the fake noodle? An imposter. Did you say that over there? I heard somebody whisper, remember this, the imposter. You got it right. October 28th, we held the Skunk Dog Cookout, everything of skunk life, remember that. We held the Skunk Dog Cookout and Big H was there. He spoke to the people. We were looking around for the rest of you guys. We were hoping and praying and wishing and I didn't get to see you. But it was a very good event. It was collaboration with the Norman Police Department. The city of Norman kicked in, you know, donating, the Hot Dog Sonic donated 500 hot dogs, Norman Air donated all the drinks. We had a lot of fun. It was a great community event. That event sparked something very big. I've spoken at the police department five times since then, doing a presentation that did first shift, second shift, third shift, and the detective division. I spoke to all the officers on the Norman Police Department. And then I was called in to speak to Chief Foster, Deputy Chief Jackson, and the entire executive staff. We solidified our partnership and what we're going to be doing to bring change to communities around, not just Norman, but around the state because we're going to be a shining light to show how we can better operate together. That was November 11th. So even though you didn't see me in November, I was working. I was working hard. And so 2025, we're going to host the, our joint community safety trainings. We'll call it Home Safe. And we're going to be training, going to different areas of community and doing community trainings. There are two words in community policing, the police get training, I feel community needs training. And so it's a partnership, it works together hand in hand. We're doing more cultural collaborations, something that's not as fun and enjoyable to talk about going on in our country right now. New York, yesterday, there was a Black Lives Matter protest, started to get kind of, kind of out of hand a little bit, out of hand a little bit, November 18th.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I wanted to bring up an issue that's arisen every time we discuss Norman's unhoused population. So no, you don't get to escape a meeting without talking about that issue. And in particular, because we saw some of it last meeting, there seems to be a misconception that appealing to moral principles in this discussion is somehow suspect because it consists primarily of emotional appeals and is therefore divisive. And as a professional philosopher, I think that's really wrong-headed and it gets a little bit in my craw. So I wanted to talk about that. There's a lot to be said in the ethics literature about the appropriate role of emotions in moral judgment, but I'll skip most of that and just note that the consensus is that dispassionate judgment, not appealing to emotions at all, isn't actually any kind of an ideal. Emotions appropriately guided are morally important in both a motivational and regulatory role. As an important, an important role for moral analysis is framing issues correctly. God knows I love models and math and all the apparatus of policy analysis, but none of that matters if you don't have the problem framed correctly. And that's where ethical consideration really helps us. It directs us to focus on the right things rather than just sort of making the trains run on time. If you're setting goals without consulting ethical issues, you're probably not doing it right. So here in brief is how I think moral issues help us appropriately frame the local discussion about unhoused folks. You, of course, may disagree, but recognize that your disagreement is actually a moral disagreement, right? You're disagreeing about a moral fundamental. So I would say first, morality isn't merely a set of behavioral constraints that limit our pursuit of our idiosyncratic goods. Rather, it sets a goal for us of human well-being or flourishing. As social creatures, everyone well be, everyone's well-being counts, and a flourishing life involves many goods, having one's material needs met, deep interpersonal relationship, seeking knowledge, and the pursuit of all those goods is overseen by a person's practical reasoning. The homelessness problem, the homelessness problem, capital T, is that unhoused folks have serious limits on their access to the conditions that allow for human flourishing. They don't have access to material needs, relationships with other members of society are distorted by fear and avoidance, focus on merely surviving limits their capacity to do things that help us develop, like have hobbies and other kinds of human pursuits. And perhaps more importantly, the rigors of being on the street create lasting damage to bodies and minds. Chronic illness, both physical and mental, can be both a cause, but importantly here, a result.
Oh, on the thing, okay. Well, we're having issues with our. We're having issues with our microphones up here too, so I'm sure that could be tied together. Evan?
As you can tell, I have some props. Okay, Evan Dunn, Ward seven, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I've got some announcements. There are still three more breathwork classes before the year ends. Everyone here is invited this coming Tuesday at noon, one week from now, this coming Friday at seven, just before the art walk starts to get going, and then next Friday at seven. There's also two more farmers' markets at which I will be selling posture furniture and youth thrones. If you know anybody who's had back pain, anybody who's got aches and pains or just wants to optimize their bodies, come get yourself a set. We're going to have a big sale. Now, for this, I'm not sure if, if we can do this and keep everything still together, but we're going to try. Oh, these kids, they didn't vote for Hamas, they were just in Gaza. Okay, so I was at the school board meeting last night and I gave everybody three books, or two books. One, The Power of Myth, right? This, The Edible Schoolyard. Two concepts that I think can enhance people's connections and the absolution of absolutisms. If you understand how the human mind appreciates story and has always been inspired and animated by stories of heroes, stories of people who faced moral dilemmas and the rubrics that they used for coming to a conclusion, I think that's beneficial. Now, what's in this briefcase? Well, I've got some seeds and I have nine copies of Science Matters for each one of you. I've kind of thought, there's a library of Congress, why not a library of council? So these are all for you. I can't tell you, you know, the value that they might create for you, but understanding that we have electromagnetic fields can awaken a certain type of appreciation that we might not have had unless we were reminded of that, unless we were reminded of Faraday and Maxwell and Clausius and all the people who have sacrificed and done so much to ensure that we have so many privileges. And, you know, what a time to be alive. Thanks, y'all.
Lloyd Cox.
Ward four. And I come in here a lot and I watch you guys and listen to you, and I think that before you guys get on council, you should take a class on high-density development. That would be a great start. And I'm really in here to talk about the parade, it was a great job, but I also go to the Welding Center and when some of them women went home, their, their houses been robbed and their garages been robbed. And the police think that they should call the police, but I can tell you from talking to them, they don't want to call the police because they're in fear of the retaliation from those guys. And I don't know why the city council can't manage that because I don't, I don't like them stealing stuff and tearing stuff up either. And the police doesn't want to do anything about it unless the victim is the one that calls the police. So that psychological problem with them, I'm not, I'm not really a psychiatrist, but I think that's a dilemma that you guys should work on. And I'm inviting our Ward four representative over to my house so them and their spouse can have a discussion with me out on that table and we can talk about the crime in our neighborhood in Ward four. And I don't know, through humanities, I don't know if you think theft and rape and murder is acceptable, but somebody should be getting a handle on some of that too. I know one of you guys was with me when we had a problem at the end of 24th Street and nobody liked it. So I don't know what to do about this stuff, but because you guys are on the city council, then, you know, those are a little bit deeper problems that you can manage other than saying, you know, if our, I don't know, I don't like the 2,000 affordable housing because the neighborhood I live in now, they want $1,000 a month just for a room. Somebody has lost their mind on that too, along with the rest of the economics, but however you guys can figure that out, then we're welcome to it. So I appreciate that. Thanks a lot.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. I hope you find peace during this time. We are adjourned.